The hour of 6:00 PM, having come and gone, we'd like to call the regular meeting to order. Madam Clerk, for the record, Alderman Pad notified that he has excused absence, or he will request a excused absence. Alderwoman Wilson will be absent for the meeting. Can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Here.
And you said Wilson is absent?
Yes.
Tillman?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
For the record, we do have a roll call. We do have five members present. We do have a quorum and ready to do the people's business. Tonight, we have two businesses that are here, so if the council can indulge me, we'd like like to make a motion to deviate from the regular order business and take up two resolutions for new businesses.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderwoman...Alderman Williams. The first business is Resolution Number Four, and the second will be Resolution Number Five and Six. Resolution Number Four is a resolution approving the Class Eight designation for 1455 Ring Road. If you want to step up, this is just for the benefit of the council. This is the old Tilly's Building. We'll have a new business in there, so if you want to introduce yourself and introduce the business.
How you doing today? My name is Gordon Castro. I'm president of City of Fort Worth.
Got it.
Sorry. I'm representing the property of 1455 Ring Road, Toyah Building Properties, which is now going to be Sunrise Cafe moving forward, and I'm here to ask for the help with our tax reduction in the Class Eight. Any questions I can answer right now? We've done a lot of work on the property. We're close to $200,000 worth of improvements. We set it, you know, in place so that the next tenant can definitely be successful there, and also supporting them moving forward with rent debatement and so forth.
What's your target opening?
Pardon me?
What's your target timeline?
First week of June.
He said first week of June. Could you speak up in the mic, please?
I'm sorry. First week of June.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I know this is located in the Seventh Ward. I know you've had conversations with the Alderman. Is there anything else you would like to tell the city council regarding the business and the grand opening?
Well, you know, obviously, we know that the previous tenant, we had some issues in regards to operations. All those have been cleared up. We've corrected everything that we had to, and we're definitely on board to keep moving forward with the new tenants and supporting them. And I'm a business consultant, restaurant consultant, that's been hired on to help them to open the restaurant. They've hired me on to help them to get the restaurant open with my background, and I'm willing to, you know, stay on board with them now.
Any other questions? Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here this evening. Can you...when I first saw this, I assumed it was going to be a Tilly's update, but it sounds like it's not a Tilly's update.
No.
What was the business that you stated would be in the property?
Sunrise Cafe.
Can you explain a little bit more what Sunrise Cafe is?
It's going to be a full-service restaurant. 60 to 70 employees will be hired, so that's new job creation. I know right now they have about maybe less than 10, so it's going to be an additional 50 employees being hired. Full-service restaurant, outdoor patio cafe, gaming room. It'll be open for breakfast, lunch, and then early dinner, so it's not going to be...it's not going to be as late night as Tilly's used to be. It's more of a dinner house now. Very, you know, good operators with success in the city, and I, you know, I'm really proud to be part of helping them, you know, get this place open.
Thank you. Sunrise, is this the same Sunrise that we...
It's on Sibley.
That's on Sibley?
Yep.
Oh, so it's in town. And did we not give a...what was it? A TIF...we gave funds for them to expand recently, did we not?
Right.
How much funds were those again? So are they not expanding on that location anymore?
They are.
Expanding at that location and opening up a new location?
Correct.
And is it going to be similar...it's going to be similar menus and...
Similar menu, but...
I guess is this an expansion of the cannabis industry or no? Is this considered a cannabis thing or is it Sunrise?
Not an expansion, no. It's definitely going to be dinner house, so this is a little bit different than what they did previously. Their menu is going to...the pastries and cannabis will stay the same at the original location, and this new location will really focus more on dinner and growing the business in the restaurant sector of this.
So the cannabis side of it won't...won't...
It might be somewhat of an infusion of it, but it's not as driven retail-wise as it was before, so it'll be somewhat different. And really, the reason for the taxes that we...as we talk about them is that the taxes are $9,000 a month, you know, so looking at that and considering that the restaurant has been closed for over a year and the struggles that the previous tenant had, I think, you know, that was really the reason that we, you know, asked the city and the mayor to help us with that because per square foot, we're giving them a great deal. We're giving them a lot of, you know, rent debatement, three months, three months, half rent. We're trying to work with them, but the taxes is what seems to always be a problem. We brought in different restaurant groups to look at the restaurant. It was the taxes. That was the problem we had.
So you're a landlord looking to bring in...
I'm not a landlord, but I work with them, yeah. Yeah, to bring...
Sunrise wouldn't own the property. Sunrise does not own the property. They would rent the property.
Correct.
Okay. Do we need to have additional license for expanding a cannabis-related business?
Under the Illinois law, if it's the same operator-owner, they don't need to expand. I don't believe that they're going to use infused products at this location.
But he said they were...
I...
They're not going to focus on.
Right. I'm not 100% sure on that, what you're asking me, but I do know that we will definitely follow whatever guidelines we have to make sure that we're operating within the, you know, within the law.
So we're not sure if we have to create another license or not?
Not another cannabis license. As long as it's the same owner, they can use cannabis under Illinois law at that different location, so they're not required to apply for another cannabis license under Calumet City.
So the current Sunrise on Torrance has a...I'm sorry, on Sibley has a license?
I believe they have a cannabis license, Cleo.
Infused.
Infused license. You want to come up to the mic, Cleo?
And I apologize. Are we sure that those are transferable? I don't know if that's an attorney question or if you can answer that question.
I will make sure that it gets corrected, yeah.
Oh, I mean, I'm sorry.
So the current location, they have an infused license. There's a difference between a cannabis license and infused license.
Sure.
So that's what it is, is infused license.
And does the council have to generate those?
Pardon me?
Does the city generate those licenses or...
That's...the city pretty much generates. Comes to part of the business license.
Okay, so...
Right. It's a category within the business license.
So after this...after approval of the Class Eight to help the developer, the council will be approached with another decision to make of expanding a license, or since they have one, does it come before the council again to have to expand?
This would be a part of their business license. When they apply for their business license, they would be applying for infusion as well within their business license.
But is there any council action needed for that?
No council license. They just apply for a business license. Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
I didn't have any other questions. Thank you.
I could also say that, I'm sorry, they are definitely making additional improvements that we made, so there's also more investment in the property besides what we did.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Alderman Tillman, would you like to approve these now or approve them under resolutions? We have one more coming up.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We have one more business coming up. Would you like to approve these under resolutions or approve them now?
Let's just go through the regular meeting and just approve them when we go through it. We can let the next person present.
The next person is 602 State Street, which is located in the First Ward. This is Global Solutions. We have Adam Dotson, and we have...want to introduce yourself from Global?
Yes, sir. It's Global Water Technology. My name is Darrell Winkup. I'm the Vice President of Business Integrations for our company.
Adam Dotson with Sandrick Law Firm. We're assisting the group in regards to getting the 6B renewal as well as getting a Class Eight on the other portion of the building that's been vacant for over a year now. I'll put...bring it back to Darrell and let him kind of speak on behalf of the group of what they're intending to do at the property.
Yeah, so thank you. So Global Water Technology was a company that was founded in 1990. We're an industrial water treatment company. We're currently based out of South Holland, Illinois. We employ approximately 150 employees across North America. Out of those 150, roughly 30 are employed in our South Holland facility for business operations, production, and warehouse. We've been in that facility for six years. When we moved there six years ago, we thought we would have a 10-year plan, and quite honestly, we have grown so dramatically over the last six years that we're bursting at the seams out of that building. We're looking for our forever home, and we believe we found it at 602 State Street. We're going to be moving from a 23,000-square-foot facility to roughly 100,000 square foot with the opportunity to expand the footprint on the site as well, as long as we're fortunate enough to be able to close on that property. We plan to make a significant investment in the remodeling of the building. As we continue to grow and expand our operations, we expect our business ops and warehouse team to grow from roughly 25 to roughly 50 people or so. Our investment in that property over the next several years will approach about $5 million when we look at investment in the upfront business ops side, new offices, and then remodeling warehousing and production space. I'm trying to think if I missed any of the bullet points that I wanted to cover.
I think as part of the hiring process for new employees, one of the things that the Cook County Tax Incentive Program has is that the Cook County Workforce Board has a program that we have to be a part of that actually where local residents would actually qualify at that level, and then would be individuals that, when they're ready to hire, would be picking those individuals off that board list. So that's something we're looking at heavily at when we do get the incentive here, hopefully from the city.
Yeah, our intent right now is...our plan is to close on that building here at the end of April. I think our tentative date right now is April 30th, and obviously, these incentives are part of our package in order to get to that close date. We are a minority business enterprise. We have been since the inception of the company, licensed in the state of Illinois. Any questions?
Yes. Thank you, guys, for coming out. When is construction slated to start after you guys close?
So right after we close, we intend to start construction on the business side, the operations side of the facility, and manufacturing side. We'll probably start on manufacturing side. Our intent is to move into the building in May of 2025, so full occupancy of both front end and back end of the building in May of next year.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I may. Thank you. Mr. Winkup, I appreciate you taking the time to talk to me earlier today.
Sure.
I kind of warned you. I'll repeat some of the questions I asked just for the benefit of the council. The...I think the biggest things that we talked about were it's not manufacturing necessarily, the equipment that filters water, but a lot of the chemical agent or additives maybe that treat water in hospitals and different industrial settings.
Yeah.
But not so much the equipment, although you can provide some support equipment.
So we do both. So we have a division that focuses on the equipment side, which is reverse osmosis membranes, deionation tanks, softeners, things like that. That's our pretreatment and division, and then we have the industrial water treatment division, which we manufacture and blend industrial water treatment chemicals.
And we spoke a little bit about what might be the, I guess, the environmental impact or environmental safeguards, dealing with chemicals and such...
Yeah.
...that are required, I guess, in this type of industry, and that can be communicated to help us feel like, you know, there's no danger, I guess, in that sense of...
Yeah, so being in the chemical industry, we're very cognizant of the fact that we deal with hazardous chemistries. We have significant protocols in place for blending, storage, secondary containment, safeguards against stormwater prevention. We have policies in place in case there are spills, which typically, we don't have any spills. I can't think of any incidents in the last six years in the South Holland facility where we've ever had any issues. You know, we take great pride in our safety record with respect to our employees, making sure they wear the right PPE, have the right equipment in place to do their jobs safely. Ultimately, we're in the business of protecting our clients, our customers, our people, and then obviously, the communities that we live in.
Well, thank you for that. And finally, as far as investment into the building, I think I seen in the Class Eight here, it was a $5 million investment to the property, a minimum of $5 million investment to redevelop the property. Is that slated to happen right away as soon as closing happens and hopefully up and running by this time next year?
There's going to be a stage investment over the next couple of years. I expect part of that $5 million to go immediately into the building because we do need to completely renovate the office space and the warehouse space in order to get it functional for us by a move-in date of May 2025, and then part of that investment is also looking at long-term as we start to expand operations, continuing to build out the building, you know, as far as we can, you know, as much as we can within the allowable limits of the city.
Thank you. We do have a project that maybe our engineers can chime in on, but for some years now, geez, probably four, five...2019, I think, we started this process of rebuilding State Street.
Yep.
A lot of industry on State Street where Kaya Manufacturing is located. Those streets weren't built or rated for truck traffic, so we will have some construction maybe starting this summer, starting right there at that corner of State Line and State Street, which is right here, and kind of moving their way across. So I think it's a...as that improvement happens, and I know the Class Eight maybe doesn't have anything to do with this, but, you know, might trigger some kind of streetscape improvement if that's something that, you know, we can talk about at a later date.
Sure.
Nothing, again, crazy, but trying to make that street more uniform and streetscape improvement. It was one of the goals that we had.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to kind of put that out there.
Yeah, we'd be absolutely open to those conversations.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable, and I asked you if we had to approve this tonight or if we can kind of punt to our next meeting in two weeks and I could visit the facility. I mean, I feel comfortable, but up to my colleagues. I'm not sure what your timeline is. I know end of month was kind of your goal to close. So again, I feel comfortable, but I would still like to take you up on the offer of touring the facility.
Regardless of whether it's approved tonight, I will absolutely extend an invitation to anyone that wants to come visit our facility. We'd be glad to host you, bring you on a tour of the facility, show you what we do, show you our people, introduce you to our team, and just show you how we do our jobs safely each and every day.
I appreciate it. That's all I had. Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you.
Thank you. With no more business in deviation, is there a motion to return to the regular order business at 6:27 PM?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Williams. We are in the regular order business. Item...we did item two on the agenda. Item one, item two on the agenda. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the true love of which is the nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for
Like to call up Pastor Stokes to offer a word of prayer, and then we'll move on to public comment. Pastor Stokes?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Father, we look to you tonight and give you praise and thanks for another opportunity to be alive, to be well. We thank you for keeping us. We thank you for protecting us. We thank you for satisfying us with our basic needs. We thank you for protecting our families. We speak peace and success to the residents of Calumet City, to businesses, and to all who reside within its borders. We thank you tonight for this business that's being conducted, and as we pray, we trust you with all of our hearts. We lean not to our understanding, and in all of our ways, we acknowledge you. We thank you as you direct our path, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Before we go to public comment, I would just ask everyone's indulgent and ask everyone to pray for the life of County Clerk Karen Yarborough. She passed away recently. Karen and I served in the General Assembly. She was one of the main proponents of abolishing the death penalty that I had the privilege of voting on that passed the General Assembly at 73 votes. She also was the main proponent of the smoking ban law and numerous other laws in Illinois before she became county clerk. I know her death has sent shockwaves to the county government. I just ask everyone for a moment of prayer, ask everyone to stand and acknowledge Karen Yarborough at this time. Al, I see you're here tonight. Did you want to add to that or as we move on to public comment?
I mean, I would gladly add to it.
If you can, Al, step to the mic. We are at the public comment portion of the meeting.
Yes.
Al Kendall is representing Cook County President Tony Breckwinkle and Cook County Government. So Al?
Yes. The...tonight, I couldn't think of no better place to be as we honor our longtime...she was the first woman who served as clerk of...for the elections for Cook County. She was committee woman. She's first congressional district committee woman. She and her family, for a long time, have fought to change both Maywood and Cook County governance and Cook County government, and the president decided of the loss is such a champion of her. And she, of course, followed her father, who was mayor of Maywood and a longtime civil rights activist, working here, here in Cook County, and working with, of course, working with longtime activists, worked with our, of course...why does it escape from me now? Of course, working with Dr. Martin Luther King, the father did, and fighting for change for here in Cook County and here around the country. With that be said, I did have two other announcements. Can I make them now? One of which is, we, the president, Cook County, along with Donna Miller and the other commissioners, we are offering $44 million in mental health grants that all the community-based organizations, in addition to health agencies, the government here, school districts can apply for if they check with the mayor and/or take my number and send me a text. I will gladly send you the link. The deadline is the 17th, but it is historic that this amount of money that we're offering around mental health to address the mental health issues around Cook County is $44 million. So if you know anyone or any creative ways or noble organizations or mental health facilities who are interested in applying, please do. Take advantage of this. Then lastly, I want to make sure that we have a hiring fair this coming 17th. We have a hiring fair, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, the 16th. It's going to be at DePalma House. I have some flyers here. You may want to take advantage of it. This is not a job fair where you come to be interviewed and have conversations. They're hiring 65 employers, are hiring on the spot, and I urge you, if you got a crumb-snatcher at home, that you need to give them some...another way to take care of those crumbs, make sure to come out and take advantage of this hiring fair. It's being organized by our sister agency, which is Hospitality Hires, and this is Chicago-Cook Workforce Partnership. Those are two major announcements I wanted to make sure to make while I had an opportunity, and I always love being here at your council meeting, this is so organized, and I enjoy working with the council and the members here, and so does the president on behalf of Cook County Board President Tony Breckwinkle. So thank you for having me for those brief moments.
And Al, the clerk has requested that we draft a resolution for Clerk Karen, which we will do, that will be sponsored by the clerk, so we'll make sure that's on the next agenda. And I know the services are this Sunday.
This Sunday and Monday. I will give you the link where you can send such either your greetings and then send the...send it later, but I'll certainly...I'll give you the link where you can send a response.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? I do have some that I will share with all of the...I will pass around the flyer, and then for those who, again, text me at 313-434-3851, I will send a digital version of both the $44 million and the flyer for the job fair, because I'm asking for 50 elected officials around Cook County to make sure to put the information out on the hiring fair. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you text me, send me the money, I will send you the information.
And you can send Al messages at all times of the night. He'll answer, so 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, just send them to Al.
That is true. My wife is used to it. 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. In fact, that's when I'm most active, at 1:00 to 5:00 in the morning.
Can you repeat that number one more time?
And once you're on my phone, I will text you at odd hours of the night, so just be prepared.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. We're in public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comment on items on the agenda? If so, please step to the mic. Is there anyone who would like to speak in public forum? Going once, going twice? We will close public forum, public comment, and move on to item five on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. Everyone should have had the minutes sent to them for this meeting. Are there any questions or corrections on the minutes as presented? If not, can someone please make a motion to approve the minutes as so stated on the agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams.
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Alderman Williams, and then second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Sandrick?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Most minutes passed, five to zero. The next item on the agenda, reports of standing committees. Alderman Gardner, Finance?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor, briefly. I'm looking to call a public safety meeting in the middle of next week for the purpose of further discussion and possibly passing a resolution for the crossing guard, the subject that we discussed last week, and also the summer plan for the police department action for the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinances and resolutions, Alderman. I know you had the minutes on the agenda. Alderman Tillman, ordinance and resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. The Ordinances and Resolutions Committee held a meeting on Monday, March 25th, where we discussed four different items. The first item was a discussion regarding an ordinance establishing an email usage policy. The committee recommended directing the city attorney to draft an ordinance establishing an email policy for all elected officials. I spoke to Attorney Stillman, and this will be on the April 25th agenda. The second item was a discussion regarding an ordinance establishing a policy aimed at encouraging minority business participation with Calumet City-controlled projects. The committee recommended drafting...the committee recommended directing the city attorney to draft an ordinance establishing a policy aimed at encouraging minority business participation with Calumet City-controlled projects. This ordinance will be up for consideration at a future meeting. This ordinance will be up for consideration at a future meeting. The final two items were a discussion regarding an amendment to Article Three, amusements, excuse me, of Chapter Fifty-four, Section One Sixty-four, video gaming, and Item Four, an ordinance amending the annual contractor's fee for contractors doing business in Calumet City. Both of those items will be discussed at a future meeting. The committee did not give any recommendations regarding those items. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a Public Works Committee scheduled for next week, committee meeting. There are a couple of items I'm waiting to get some confirmation on. As the chairman of the Public Works Committee, I have initiated discussions regarding personnel changes and the departments that fall under the auspice of the Public Works Department Committee, following the departure of our Director of Economic Development. I reached out to the mayor to arrange a meeting with the personnel director to better understand these changes. As of this evening, the mayor's office has not scheduled a date for the discussion, but I'm sure one will be forthcoming. So look out for a Public Works Committee meeting in the near future. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Permits and licensing, Alderman Smith?
Yes. Here's a total of businesses in the city of Calumet City for the month of April twenty-twenty-four as of yet. Total number of businesses, four hundred and ninety, pending approval, twelve, and we have a total of four thousand one hundred and nine active contractor licenses.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports, Alderman Smith. You want to start on this side with city council reports?
Yes. The Seventh Ward Monthly Town Hall Meeting will be held next Saturday at DA's banquet hall from ten a.m. to noon. If you have any questions on that, please contact seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-seven or A Smith at Calumet City dot O R G. Also, Seventh Ward would like to welcome Smoking Joe's Barber Shop, which is located on Rib Oaks Drive. I had the opportunity last week to stop by there and sample, and it's pretty good, pretty good barber, barbers in there. Also, also want to congratulate the School Board One Fifty-seven Hoover Scrum, Seventh Grade and Eighth Grade Team on winning the state championship as well as placing in the state tournament. We awarded those kids shoes at the new foot locker in the Seventh Ward at Rib Oaks West. So congratulations again.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to all the Fifth Ward residents. I want you guys to continue to contact my office with issues, seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-five. Those of you that have reached out to my office regarding alley grades, I have submitted those requests to the Public Works Department, and they have advised me that alleys are currently under review and are going to be scheduled for grading in a timely fashion. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth Ward, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First, we know the God makes all things possible. I want to thank the residents that came out to the Fourth Ward and Third Ward Town Hall Meeting. Your complaints and concerns will be, well, were forwarded already, if not instantaneous, to the directors and commissioners that showed up at the meeting. And residents, please continue to report streetlights out, abandoned vehicles, abandoned homes, potholes, and any other irregularities that you may observe in your wards or streets or whatever you see in the city abroad. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. First Ward, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I want to thank, in our last meeting, I didn't get a chance to make some comments about CMAP and the First and Fifth Ward Joint Town Hall Meeting that was held at Jesus Shepherd of Souls Parish, the St. Andrews Worship Site there in the gymnasium. I want to thank all the residents that came out. Also, thank CMAP. Again, this is, was a two-year study, and it is a robust report that will be, is getting finalized right now. Again, this will outline recommendations and kind of create a framework for the future of the First and Fifth Ward. Again, the First and Fifth Ward share a lot of the same symptoms. It is the original Calumet City. We have old infrastructure here. Our housing stock is very similar. So we share a lot of the same issues, if you, if you may. So this document will, will be a framework and a roadmap for zoning changes to be made, infrastructure improvements to be prioritized, transportation safety, and along with connectivity with bike trails and such, and walkability, economic development. So again, it touches on a lot of the, you know, the, the next steps that need to happen and kind of lays out the next year of what the First and Fifth Ward will be striving for. So again, I can't say thank you enough to CMAP and the team and our economic development team and our grant writer Val Williams and the work that they do to make sure that CMAP continues to do the great work here in Calumet City. And then briefly, I just want to say, in a bid to enhance transparency and understanding of agenda procedures within the committee and council meetings, I requested a meeting with the mayor and city attorneys. I am, my aim is to gain clarity on the decision-making process, especially concerning the postponement of agenda items without a formal vote and the ability of the mayor to amend or not post committee agendas. In a response, the mayor referred to the powers of the presiding officer. He suggested a meeting just prior to this evening's council session to delve deeper into the matter, but that was unfortunately canceled due to an emergency about twenty minutes ago or thirty minutes ago. So again, these interactions kind of underscore the significance of effective communication, I think, between the council. You know, seeking these clarifications on personnel matters or agenda procedures, you know, is vital for effective governance for our community and ensuring that, you know, we're all on the same page and working towards these common goals. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Under the mayor's report, just want to announce that we have Earth Day celebration coming up Monday, April twenty-second. All residents are invited. We would love businesses to come out. We have the documents writing truck that will be here from twelve p.m. to four p.m. So bring out all your documents. We also have the taco truck and two other trucks, the ice cream truck, that will be here from two p.m. to four p.m. And it says electronic recycling to six-thirty. We also will be planting trees, five trees in Calumet City for residents who have lost loved ones. Two trees will be planted at the library, and then also there will be three other trees planted throughout Calumet City. We will be also cleaning up. We have not only Public Works, thank them for participating, but we also have residents who are participating. We want to encourage residents to keep our city clean. We know that my direction to Public Works has been to clean the expressways, make sure weekly clean the expressways, make sure that there's no trash there, but also make sure that when people enter Calumet City, they see a clean city. We also got word from I-DOT that they will be out this week, next week, in the next two weeks, cleaning litter from the expressway, coming into Calumet City off the, off ramps. So again, we want to encourage residents to please make sure you help out, do your part. I want to invite residents Monday, April twenty-second to the city for Earth Day celebration. There are many Earth Day celebrations going on around Calumet City. Last year, we took kids from the youth program and Public Works employees and employees and went to two senior homes and cleaned behind those. So we want to encourage people to recognize Earth Day, to support each other, and the great way to do that is come here to our city and not only help us plant trees, but also help us keep clean. I do want to announce, and I think I gave this to the Alderman, we did get announcement that the city got a one point four million dollar rebuild fast grant infrastructure. We do have the award letter, which I will let, show to the city council. But again, this just shows that our grant department, our community economic department is moving fast, and we have businesses that are interested in coming to Calumet City, and we want to make sure that we let them know that Calumet City is open for business, and we want to make sure that all the good businesses that are coming to Calumet City, we not only give them the support that they need, but we keep it moving. So thank you, guys. Thank you, council. Thank the Department of Commerce for this letter that they sent, and thank the community economic department for keeping things going. The next item on the agenda is item eight, informational items to be accepted and placed on file. We have one item. Is there a motion to place item eight A on file?
Mayor, I had a question. There may be a correction, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. I did see the flyer. I see here it's City Clerk and Mayor Jones, mobile vehicle sticker program. The flyer only was missing the city clerk. Is there an amended flyer?
It swung. I just talked to the clerk, Alderman. It will be coming out.
Yeah. Thank you. That was all I had.
Is there a motion to approve item eight A?
Some more.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Alderman favor? All the polls? Item eight A is approved. Item nine is action items, two items on the agenda. Is there any questions regarding item nine, one and two? If not, can someone make a motion to approve items nine, one and two? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Smith, I mean Alderman Tillman. Correct? Alderman Tillman?
Correct.
Alderman Tillman. So Madam Clerk, for the record, Alderman Smith made the motion and Alderman Tillman made the second. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Item ten are new business items, building permits, and we also have fence variance. We can take item ten and eleven together. Alderman Tillman, how would you like to? I know one is in the Seventh Ward and one is in?
Seventh Ward.
Seventh Ward. So both in the Seventh Ward?
Mayor, just for clarification, six forty-six is the Fourth Ward.
Sorry, Alderman. So?
Numbers get fixed.
One is in, one is in the Fourth Ward, one is in the Seventh Ward. Alderman Williams, would you make a motion for items ten, one and eleven, one as well?
Some more.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Williams for items ten, one and eleven, one, which is new fence and fence variance. Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Gardner.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Item twelve are new business items, resolutions and ordinances. At the next meeting, we do have the resolution prepared. We sent the copy to Alderman Navarrete for the TF North Football Team, so that will be on the April twenty-fifth agenda. I know there was a motion made for that in December and a recent motion, so we do have that ready. Alderman Tillman, items twelve, one through six?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just a quick question, and I didn't mean to put our city engineer on the spot, but I asked if it was okay, if you'd just elaborate a little bit on item one, on what exactly that means, the I-DOT resolution for improvement?
Matt?
If you don't mind. Thank you.
This is part of the MFT resolution in order to utilize motor fuel tax funds for a project for one hundred and fifty-seven Wilson. We had previously put it on, and it was under an action item in order for, we're fixed to assign it a resolution number. It needed to be under the resolution ordinance line item. So that's what this is. So it's just a procedural to follow.
Yeah, because, so it's for a project that we had already talked, approved and talked about. That's all. Yeah. Thank you. That's what I thought.
Thank you. Alderman Tillman, items nine, I mean, twelve, one through six?
Let's take items four, five and six separately. So I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through three as presented.
Is there a second for items one through three?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Call them twelve, one through three?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items four as presented.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on item four?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes. So my question is, it's going back to what Alderman Navarrete stated earlier. I know that we gave them grant funding. I would like to know the status of what was done with the grant funds. I'm at the current location on Sibley. Where's the construction process at? Where are we at in that construction process?
Wadito or Adam, do you guys want to come up and talk about that briefly? Is construction finished? The Alderman, so the Alderman question is about the funds that were given by the city for the location on Sibley. Can you give us an update on that location? Is it finished? And then anything else on the Sibley location?
It's pretty much finished. We're really just waiting on the HVAC to finish on the roof, which we've, it's really just a contractual thing. We've already spoke with the building department and spoke with the HVAC, so they're, we're getting new, new units for both of those units next door. And so the HVAC, I guess they had some bad weather or some parts were delayed, but that's pretty much the only thing. So the plumbing is done, the electrical is ran over there, all of the walls have been, you know, put up. So that's really the only thing we're waiting on is the HVAC part to be done and then put the furniture in there, really.
Okay. Thank you. And next question is, for the new anticipated location at fourteen fifty-five Ring, is there any anticipated entertainment venue? Is this going to be an anticipated entertainment venue as far as?
When you say entertainment, what do you mean?
Live music.
Do you guys not want that? Because tell me what you, because you know, the reason why?
But, but the issue is, and I'm not, you know, predicting anything or making any predictions towards you, but we've had businesses in the past, they anticipate and they sell to council a concept where it's going to be food bar and grill. The next thing you know, it's a club, it's a nightclub.
So it's definitely not going to be a nightclub. We actually jumped on that location from, you know, putting the small dining on Sibley because it was basically already, you know, already done. So it's basically going to be a sit-down, you know, soul food restaurant. We do want to have Sunday brunch, you know, gospel brunch, have, you know, singers or whatever, be able to come in on the weekend. However, I have heard the stories of the Old Tillys. Our, our whole focus is to de-Tilly-tize the place, okay? So we do not want any of that riffraff. I'm definitely not about that, and neither is anybody that works for us. So we want to work with the city as much as possible. If y'all say y'all don't want live music and y'all just want me to serve good food, then that's what I do, you know? So if that's something that you guys are just in, not in agreements with, I'm here to serve you guys, and, you know, I would want all of you guys to be able to feel comfortable when you come, a safe place to come, and it's, it's not going to be a club, so it's like reservation only. We're going to be open from eight a.m. to two p.m., and it's going to be called Sunrise, breakfast, brunch, lunch. We're going to close at two, give the breakfast people time off, open back up from four to midnight, and it's going to be called Sunset, the elevated dining experience, where it will be all reservation only. And if it's slow and we can't get out of reservation, then of course we'll take walk-ins. But that's, that's our model, and that's what we want to go for. So hopefully, you know, it don't be nothing that it was before. You know, I've, I've heard the stories and we're not in the business to lose, and I don't want y'all to shut us down, so that's what we are with it.
Thank you for that.
Pretty much to kind of period Alderman Gardner's narrative on that, but an entertainment license is, as long as it's controlled and, you know, I don't get a whole bunch of calls from like the senior housing that's over there about, you know, noise complaints and disorderly. I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and we won't be open like till, you know, two, three o'clock in the morning. We will definitely be closing at midnight. I don't even want to stay up that late, so hopefully. I'm getting kind of old, y'all, so, you know, hopefully it will be nothing like it was. That's what I want to bring to the